Good evening. Welcome to our city council meeting, January sixth, two thousand twenty-five. Happy New Year, everybody. Shall we start with a call this meeting order? Can we start with roll call, please?
Certainly. Counselor McBride?
Here.
Counselor Wheatley?
Here.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman?
Here.
Mayor Rosacker?
Here.
Counselor Cloyd?
Here.
Counselor Carmen?
Here.
Would you please rise and participate in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, being the first meeting of the new year, our first order of business is going to be to for the new counselors and the newly elected counselors to fulfill their oath of pledge oath of office.
All right, we're starting with Counselor Yarnell Holloman.
How about you have it printed for me?
Yes.
Wow.
I'm gonna give sign things too, so.
All right.
All right. Ready? Raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Elise, no, I say your name.
I, Elise Yarnell Holloman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
I will support the Constitution and laws.
I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Oregon.
State of Oregon.
I will support the charter and ordinances.
I will support the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Newburgh.
Of the city of Newburgh.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Of a city council member.
Of a city council member.
Of the city of Newburgh.
Of the city of Newburgh. So help me God. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Yeah, all right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I say your name.
I, Jerry Turgason.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
I will support the Constitution and laws.
I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
I will support the charter and the ordinances.
I will support the charter and the ordinances.
Of the city of Newburgh.
Of the city of Newburgh.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
The duties of a city council member.
The duties of a city council member.
Of the city of Newburgh.
Of the city of Newburgh.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Well, some of them are fine. Then you're gonna begin. In years, all right?
And who went on the score?
All right, Mike, we get to share. All right. I say your name.
I, Mike McBride.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the state of Oregon.
Of the state of Oregon.
I will support the charter and ordinances.
I will support the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Newburgh.
Of the city of Newburgh.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Faithfully perform the duties.
Of a city council member of the city of Newburgh.
Of a city council member of the city of Newburgh.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations to the three of you. We look forward to working with you for at least the next two years. Will, you get to what? What was that? Will, you get to follow that up.
Well, it's almost impossible to follow that up, but I'll give it my best shot with the city manager's report. And honorable mayor and counselors, this is the city manager's report of monthly events that occurred in December of two thousand twenty-four. And wow! With a new year, we have a change of design in bullet point style. More punchy, and the department heads have rapidly shifted to provide me the information in the format that was requested by council. NDPD news. As you can see, at the annual party which the police department has every year, there was a wide variety of awards were given out for officers who did different very positive actions throughout the previous period, such as the most DUIs and the rookie of the year and the most steady and consistent officer. Shop with a cop was smashing. Thirty families were helped directly and over a hundred families were touched by it in one way or another. Community development happenings. The Innovation Accelerator launch Mid Valley is going to be coming to town soon with a variety of stakeholders and partners. Look out for coffee gatherings and an entrepreneurs conference that will be coming this spring. The idea behind this is that it's an incubator for new business ideas. Here is one of our apartment complexes that is coming along. CDD requests that counselors avoid any risk of ex parte contacts as this moves its way through the planning process. And welcome to our new plans examiner, Maria, who I'm going to be meeting with very shortly. City Recorder has exploded into action in December. All of the boxes that you see in the records room are waiting to be digitized as she continues her battle to make nasty grubby paper a thing of the past for this city. And she has moved mountains to make that happen. She's got a two thousand twenty-five work plan, and we are confident, dare I make this remark in the council chamber, that within just two years, this city will be paper-free. Wood? Water filter covers. Keller provided our good friends with Oregon Health Authority an update at the thirty percent complete for review for the water plant covers. Keller's progressing along nicely. Of course, our good friends at OHA have given us a nice new deadline of two fifteen twenty-five to be at the ninety percent plan completion stage, but we will make that target. Preliminary site work is going on with geotechnical investigations next to the existing wastewater plant. That means that we have drilled five deep holes in the ground. We're looking at the strata to figure out if that is a better site for the water plant and also to look at future oxidation ditches that might happen on that site. I don't have the report back yet, but if it is positive, if it turns out to be positive, that could save five or six million dollars on the cost of building a water plant by avoiding having deep pylons. Engineering gets it done. Request for information was submitted to the city about the wastewater treatment plant capacity study. City staff have provided most of the information, and a formal kickoff meeting and site tour is happening on January seventeenth. This is our investigation to discover how much remaining capacity exists at the wastewater treatment plant in response to the letter that our friends at DEQ sent us saying that we were near capacity and would probably have to build a third oxidation ditch soon. You know you're at home when you visit Libraryland. The kids' craft sale was a whopping success. I personally went there and bought lots of things that I probably didn't need. Seventy-seven youth vendors and seven hundred and sixty people in attendance. We had a blood drive, and the seasonal all-ages winter crafting was a big hit. Now, this next screen shows you a weird craft thing that I've never heard of before. It's a nook thing that fits between books and gives them some real flavor. Wow. Wow, who'd have thought that? The monthly memory cafes that the library has invented and are doing continue to be held to help caregivers with folks that are struggling with memory loss and various other issues connected to long or short-term memory. We recently received this quote that this drop-in session literally saved her life by giving her something to look forward to, to be part of this community where everybody is welcome. Spreading the word. Internal mini newsletters called Coffee Breaks have started flowing from the community engagement department to our staff. The city graphic design specialist is now serving as the interim public information officer, and she has committed to completing a master's degree as part of that deal. The interim PIO attended a basic PIO training with FEMA. And over in HR land, oh, wait, I should have said something. Hang on, let me back up a step. Also, I want to let you know that the website is under budget and on track and will be coming out in February, and it will be a modern, fully searchable website that will also activate screen readers, it will be ADA compliant, and more importantly, it will just basically work because it will have metadata on every page. So we're on schedule. Expect to hear something from Emily in February. HR, they assisted the council with the annual city manager evaluation. Sadly, you're stuck with me for at least one more year, I think. HR participated in a labor management team meeting with ASME, and I gathered up all the new staff who never got to come to City Hall during the flood, and we all sat together, and we talked about our strive values, and we talked about why they matter and how it reflects in the work that each and every one of us does every day. And it was awesome. And they learned about our work culture and what we expect of our staff here. We also had a library lunch and learn, helping us choose what books to read this winter. IT performed several significant in-house updates. Now, we are being forced against our will by Microsoft to move to Windows eleven. We don't want to move to Windows eleven. We don't like Windows eleven, but they're making it so that parts of our IT infrastructure are not going to be working soon if we don't move. So we're starting. We also deployed some dedicated cell modems to the mobile units with the police department to include, to improve connectivity. We visited another agency to learn about the e-ticketing system, which was one of the things that you approved to be purchased with ARPA money. And we upgraded the OS on the city's thin clients. And I'm always talking about thin clients. What are those things? So I've got some pictures. That is a cellular modem. And the bit sticking up transmit radio waves. And this is a thin client. And basically, it creates a node on our desktop. It doesn't have a hard drive in it, but it connects to the rest of our infrastructure, and it's a lot cheaper than a full-scale computer, which is why we use these. Also, anything that's on your desktop is backed up in real time. Finance has been working on many things in December, closing out the audit, starting the supplemental budget work, beginning personnel budgeting for the biennium, which is forecasting four years ahead, red light camera implementation, as well as meetings with ASME, starting in a regular pattern of meeting with them and management. Public Works orders. Crikey, look at that statistics. Forty-eight average per working day, forty-nine average per working day. And here is two of the things that would count as one of those repairs. It's incredible to think that this happens every day, every week, every month. Emergency notifications. As you may know, we run an emergency Everbridge test, and we do it every year. So we did that again, making sure that everybody's data is up to date so we can push a message in the event of an emergency. There was a walkthrough at City Hall after the flood, and of course, many small safety issues were found because people hadn't been in the building for a while, and we're going to be working on fixing those safety issues. Here are some more things that maintenance has done recently. Miles of cleaning. Main lines inspected, water meter installs, many other things. And here are some more maintenance recent tasks. Water mains flushed, valves exercised, connections, disconnections, and forty-three leak checks investigated and solved for the good of our residents. Operations missions. Public Works operations has been working very hard because the PLC programming and hardware installs have been going on at the same time as their normal work, and they've been able to keep up, and that is going along on schedule as well. The headworks failed, had to be fixed. There were filter changes. The PLC work was going on that affected the composter, solids handling in the headworks, and the secondary building control panel and remote site SCADA backup units will be next. Now, I know that's got something to do with connecting from a remote location into the system, but if you want to know more about that, let me know, and I'll get one of the IT guys to explain it better. Here is a Christmas tree install, a new sewer service, and a snapshot from our tree trimming program, which, as you know, does the city in four sections and does one at a time. Here are some facilities things, and we are always setting up meetings, tearing them down, doing smoke detector tests, relocating materials to City Hall after the flood in this case, removing desks and checking AED units. So as you can see, as usual, residents' tax dollars have been very hard at work. I wonder if there are any questions.
Counselor McBride? So I've got two. One is for the water treatment plant, the holes that you're drilling, how soon is the timeline? You might have said it, and I just missed it, but how soon is the timeline that we would have some results back on that?
I anticipate that perhaps as early as the next council meeting, I will have some data back. If not, it would definitely be the one after. The report is being written right now, and I'm expecting it soon.
And the other question was, this might be for Russ, or you might know Will, but anyway, flushing the main water lines, why do we need to flush them if water's kind of moving through them all the time anyways, going to different houses and businesses? Why do we need to flush them? What's the purpose?
One of the reasons is it's a requirement of the Oregon Health Department that we regularly flush our mains. But secondary is most of our water mains are ductile iron with a cementous lining. As everybody knows, cement has sand in it and grit, and all this does is remove all those foreign materials that might be in there and help our disinfection of our water mains remain at a constant level throughout the entire system. So it refreshes it up. If we've got water moving through the mains, it moves in a column. It doesn't move the entire pipe at one time. So it might have a six-inch pipe, but only three inches of water is moving through it. So this freshens the whole system up when we do that. And the reason we do it now is because water demand is low, and it's easy for us to move the water.
Thank you, Russ. I did not know that.
Will, what was the location of the new, where you're drilling the holes? Isn't that by the sewer or the?
So if you were to look at a Google map and you were to imagine on the lower left-hand quadrant, the current wastewater plant, and if you were to imagine up towards the middle of this imaginary rectangle, the solar plant, the area where the drillings are are between the two to see if that entire field, basically to test the sediment throughout that whole area, which already belongs to the city.
So we have no general public comments. Our first item on new business is a street seat pilot program. And that's going to be Scott.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council, Scott Segal, community development director. And I was asked to present to you this evening on the city street seat program. And what prompted this were a number of complaints and responses by the city to the existing street seat that is at the former Reddick and Wood restaurant site at the corner of seven twenty East First and Edwards. And I'll get into sort of what the situation is there in a moment, but I wanted to just provide some background on the program, which has been in existence since two thousand sixteen. And the request this evening pursuant to your request for this to come before you is, one, to provide direction in the form of a motion as to whether to retain, remove by a date certain, initiate immediate removal, or take some other action related to the street seat that I mentioned at the former Reddick and Wood restaurant site, which is now vacant. And secondly, we're interested in hearing the will of council on the program itself and the policy, and if you would want to see any changes to that program, which to date has only been applied to one location. So there's only one location that has permission. Oh, other direction? Okay, thank you. I'll keep going. All right, thank you. And again, the two questions that are before the council this evening. So the program's guidelines, the terms, and the application materials are in your request for council action. They're in attachment one. They're summarized here. The program, in general, the intent is to provide on-street, to utilize on-street parking areas that may be underutilized for outdoor seating for restaurants in order to activate the street and to provide space for residents and visitors to stop, sit, and enjoy the downtown or enjoy the community. Since the beginning of the pilot program, as I mentioned, or as I may not have mentioned, there have been three applications for street seats, only one of which has been approved, the one that I mentioned, and that was on April sixteenth, two thousand sixteen. And the copy of the approvals in attachment two of your packet. And here's just an overview of the location. The street seat is in that red rectangle that is pointed out there. And this is a recent photograph. Currently, it's not in use. Just a little background and chronology here. As I mentioned, the approval was granted in two thousand sixteen. There have been eight calls in response to criminal mischief or other illicit activity in the area of the street seat, including overnight camping, unwanted loitering, garbage, feces, and one warrant arrest. Additionally, at least one citizen has sent in a video of an individual under the influence of drugs while at the street seat after hours. We did initiate contact with the business owner. As you may or may not know, the street seat permit is granted to the business owner, not to the property owner. And as we now know, the business is not, no longer operating there. In December, Reddick and Wood requested additional time, three months, to determine a responsible party for future, potential futures use of the street seat, and their lease ended in December. So sort of our posture on this was and has been, if there is a new tenant who may be imminent and would want to use that space for their outdoor seating as part of a restaurant, and we can move this toward compliance, and it can operate safely and in the manner that it was intended under the program, we'd want to support that. So our communication is open with the owners of the former business there, and they have requested more time to respond. So that's a question that is before you this evening. And while we believe that additional time is reasonable, it's a reasonable request, and we would like to support local property owners in finding a new tenant, there is some risk. Here, we're concerned that abandonment of the street seat could occur. And because the business to which the street seat's approval is issued no longer exists in that location, and no other party has applied to receive approval or to be able to use the street seat and continue operation of the structure, there's a risk that it may become abandoned, which we obviously don't want to see that happen. And if it were to become abandoned, there would be increased risk for other illicit activities occurring there, and that's something that the city generally wants to see. According to our Newburgh Police Department personnel, abandonment of the structure for even a relatively short period of time would be expected to exacerbate these undesirable activities. So that's why we're here before you this evening. So again, the purpose is to activate the street to enhance the downtown, to facilitate economic vitality and activity in the downtown. They are intended to be temporary platforms, and they're generally limited in space so that they're not occupying more than, it's a six on-street parking spaces. Generally, they would only be approved in areas where that displacement or loss of parking wouldn't harm other businesses their own and operated by the business owners, I had mentioned. And they're limited to eating and drinking establishments in the central business district outside of ODOT's right-of-way. The street seat, some of this is redundant here. So the applicant importantly is responsible for all costs associated with maintenance, among other things, and removal of the street seat if so ordered by the city. And the applicant is also obligated to keep the area free of debris, grime, graffiti, and to keep any plants. There are no plants on the street seat today, but if there were, they'd have to maintain those. Removal of litter and other maintenance is their responsibility as well. And failure to maintain the seat may result in the revocation. And failure to maintain the seat may result in the revocation of the permit. And that concludes my presentation this evening. I'm here to answer any questions. Um, again, we're asking for your direction on, uh, ones, your, your, the will of the council on the disposition of this street seat and also any feedback or direction that you may have on the program itself.
Okay. I have several questions. The police complaints, um, do you know if those have mainly occurred while the business has been closed or? Cause I went by there yesterday and there were piles of somebody's stuff there yesterday. Did this, were this, the criminal mischief, was that occurring when the building was, or when the, um, restaurant was open? Or has this mainly occurred since they've been closed?
That is a good question. I may defer to the chief if we have that information.
I'd have to look. It says, uh, over a two-year period. Um, so I don't know exactly when, but it's gotten worse, uh, since the business has moved out. Um, and it's, you know, like Scott said, it's in, it's a nice idea. Um, if, I wish it was working. But, uh, when nobody's there, there's a lot of problems and there's no one there to watch it.
Um, there's something in here that's, uh, confusing me. So you mentioned that it's up to the business owner to maintain and then also dismantle it. But then it also talks about, um, the city. So if we voted to not continue this, it also um, seems to hold the city liable for dismantling it. So I'm kind of confused about if we did decide to take it down, if it's the business owner or the city.
Yeah. Thank you, Councilor Wheatley. I've been thinking about this a lot and, uh, City Attorney Walker and I haven't had a chance to talk about this because the, the street seat structure is, is pro, personal property or private property. Although it's placed within the public right of way, so it's allowed there by permission of the city as an encroachment into the right of way. And so our, you know, our goal with any sort of code compliance action is to attain voluntary compliance and to have the owner, uh, take responsibility for it. And if, if, if it's the will of the council to have it removed, to ask them to do so by, by a date certain, that would be our first sort of stance on this. Um, if there were a failure to comply with that, then we would want to consult legal counsel as to how the city engages with that because it is their property, right?
Mr. Walker, could you please let us answer that?
Sure, sure. Thanks, Mayor, and, um, thank you, Councilor Wheatley. I, I agree with, um, with Scott that the city does have a, um, the ability, there's guidelines and just generally speaking to, require that the, uh, the owner of that personal property be responsible for the removal of the property once the business is no longer functioning. Um, so there is a, there is a legal avenue there for the city to require that of the owner. Now, the enforcement of that, right, is a different, is, is a more complex story, right? If you have, um, an owner of that personal property that's no longer in business, that, um, has essentially, you know, uh, wound up their business and is no longer functioning, the actual enforcement of clearing the right of way, practically speaking, you know, does fall to the, uh, to the city in a lot of ways, uh, if there's no one there to enforce those rights against.
Councilor McBride?
So I, I was on the council a few years ago when we extended this. Um, and I, I didn't want to do anything against the business. But it seems like to me, this is the only one in the area I would be, I'd be inclined just to discontinue the program. I think we need the parking spaces. Um, so I, that's kind of how I feel. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but, I mean, if it was an existing business, you know, I'm, I'm all for doing whatever you can to help them out, but it's sitting empty now and I'd rather have the parking spaces, I think. We've got, uh, new businesses that have moved in downtown and we have, you know, more people going downtown. I think we need the extra parking.
Councilor McBride? We do have a public comment, someone here to make public comment on this. So if we could just ask our questions right now, we'll let her speak and then we can deliberate. Uh, Councilor here now?
Can you explain to me just for me to process through all of this, um, the difference, and this might be a cosmic-y question? Um, or just if you're willing to give a little bit of commentary of the difference between this program and say like Shaheilum Brewing that has more like open outdoor, do we get a rise in calls for similar type of area?
I would say we don't, we've gotten calls, uh, you know, at all of, all of our businesses and we, you know, obviously try to support that. Uh, the one thing about like Shaheilum Brewery is it's clear off the road. It's kind of sets back. Um, I believe they also have a video camera system. Um, their uh, seating is, well, it's outside, it's still enclosed in a tent. So it kind of looks like it's part of the building. So, um, and, and that's a lot further to travel than, say, the area we're talking about, uh, today.
All right. There's no more questions for Scott. Thank you very much. And we do have public comment. Our friend Merrill Kunkel. Welcome.
All right, I'm on. Uh, hello, councilors and mayor. My name is Merrill Kunkel. I'm the Director of Operations for the Shaheilum Valley Chamber of Commerce. Um, I'm here to speak in support of retaining the street seating pilot program in general. Um, the community in our chamber was really sad to see Riddick Wood, the only business to have utilized the program so far, go out of business. And when a business in Newburgh closes, it highlights the daily challenges small business owners face. This underscores the need to prioritize and support every business in our community. And programs like this, without any financial impact on the city, are part of that effort. Local businesses face significant challenges such as the high cost associated with building expansions or relocating to larger spaces, issues that this council has worked diligently to address. Street seating programs can not only support a business's bottom line, but also improve Newburgh's overall livability by fostering a vibrant welcoming downtown. The chamber believes businesses should be given every opportunity to thrive and the street seating program represents an additional tool to support the success of our small local businesses. Um, the chamber believes in supporting programs that contribute to the livability of our city and make it easier for businesses to succeed. Therefore, we urge the city council to consider extending the pilot program. Uh, in regards to the, the question of the parking, the recent parking study showed that there was adequate parking in the downtown. And, um, we do not believe that the street seating program impacts it significantly enough to, um, be worth canceling the program for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Merrill. Um, now, Councilor McBride, do you want to go ahead and start the deliberations? No?
I'm thinking weighing pluses and minuses here.
Councilor Wheatley?
Um, at this point, I'm in favor of dismantling the patio. I think it's a, it's a nuisance. It's bringing crime. Um, they don't have a new tenant that is interested in it. So I am concerned about the parking, even though the study said that we had enough. We know that during certain times it is tight. Um, I know, I, of course I'm for businesses, but given the information we have now, I, um, I'm not in favor of keeping it. And also, um, I believe it was a $150 permit fee through the city. Was that how much it to get the, to even be able to sit there? There was some talk about possibly going through the state.
There, there was some discussions around doing cost recovery at one time for, for the, in, in exchange for the loss of the parking spots that we had talked about. And that figure had been discussed at the time of the last renewal.
Yeah. So I'm concerned about the crime. No one's going to be going in there anytime soon. And then also I was concerned that it seemed like they were getting a large, a, a bunch more, um, seating, but they weren't really paying a whole lot for it. So it felt inequitable to me. Um, so at this point, I think it needs to come down as soon as possible. As soon as possible. That would be my vote.
Now, to that end, uh, Mr. Walker, we've apparently told them that they have three months to decide. Is that now the timeline? Do we have to stick with that?
Are you talking about giving three months to Riddick Wood or three months to the, to the landlord? Uh, or the owner of the actual property?
If I understand, if I understood correctly, the permit is to the Riddick Wood. It no longer is, is in existence. So I, I'm, okay, Scott raises his hand and we'll listen.
Yeah, maybe just a clarifying comment. Uh, Riddick Wood has requested three months to, to seek a new tenant. Uh, we have not approved or disapproved of that. We have come to you for direction on that.
And so, oh, Mayor, if I may, as far as the, um, Riddick Wood's request, you know, the issuance of the permit is more akin to almost like a, like a license to use the space than some more aggressive property right, if you will. So if the city wants to reject that and revoke the, 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 the permit, if you will, um, it's within its authority to do so.
Councilor Carmen?
Um, maybe Scott knows. I'm guessing they asked for this extension on December fifth. So that puts us around March fifth for.
That's correct, Councilor Carmen. Yep.
And then, uh, a question for City Attorney. If we remove this, are we responsible for storing this and holding on to it? The materials until the owner of the business decides to pick it up for some uncertain amount of time?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, Councilor Carmen. There is, um, we're getting into the Uniform Commercial Code, um, provisions and property rights. There is, uh, a requirement as far as providing notice of removal and once the personal property is removed, holding on to a certain period of time. I'd have to circle back with you with exactly how long that is. I, it's not, I don't recall it being in perpetuity, like you have to hold on to it forever, but I can come back to council with the more specific timeline, if that's a direction that the council would like to go as far as removal is concerned.
I have another question on that. It's the obligation of the licensee to remove it. Assuming that he doesn't, I remember in a former meeting when we discussed this, our Public Works Director made the statement that he could take that down in a few minutes. Now, if he did that, it probably wouldn't be fully salvageable material. Uh, is that, is that an issue that, that we need to be concerned with?
Yeah, you know, I don't have a lot of familiarity with the makeup of the street seating itself, but I can imagine, you know, and as part of the, let's just call it the demo of that space, it's, um, uh, it's now is the most efficient to make sure it all remains exactly intact. You know, after providing notice and going through the, the, the demo, um, of the space, um, if the personal property is damaged, you know, could the tenant then come back and bring a claim with respect to damage to his personal property? Um, that is possible. They could bring that claim. Uh, is it a strong claim after providing notice and actually, you know, providing an opportunity? Not, not a very strong one, but there is, there is some exposure there, Mayor, to your, to your underlying question.
So I guess, um, in regards to Councilor Carmen's question, could, if we, we do ask them to dismantle it, could we write in as part of the agreement that they have to dis- dismantle and discard everything associated with the?
Uh, Council, yes, yes, we can.
Thank you. Uh, how much notice do you think is appropriate to give the business owner before, um, removal is necessary?
Yeah, that's, that's the tricky point. It's kind of tied to your, to your previous question, Councilor Carmen, about the storage component. Because what I would want to do or what I would advise the city to do is to pair those notices together with respect to the dismantling and the storage, so giving them dates certain so that they can run a little bit quicker. Uh, both obligate, you know, not only the dismantling, but the storage obligation. I'd want that to run as quickly as possible, tied in time to the dismantling. Um, so I'd want to get the answer to, to that first piece, the concrete answer to that first piece before advising on the second piece. Um, but if you're asking me just kind of ballpark, are we talking days? Are we talking years? Are we talking weeks? Are we talking months? It's, it's more of a, in the, in the, in the weeks category than it is in like the years or extended months category.
Councilor McBride?
So I thought that if, I thought it's the responsibility of Riddick Wood to take it down, not our responsibility to take it down. Did, did I miss something there?
Yeah. So you're right, Councilor McBride, that it is, the way the program is set up, the responsibility to take it down is on Riddick Wood. Um, the issue is that we're dealing kind of with some competing sources of authority or it's competing law, if you will. So on one hand, we've created this essentially a contractual obligation where Riddick Wood has to take it down. On the other hand, if the city proceeds with taking it down itself because Riddick Wood doesn't respond or doesn't respond quick enough, it, 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 triggers or brings in some other sources of law or authority with respect to the personal property and what the city might have to do with respect to that personal property. So you're right, it, that it is Riddick Wood's responsibility, but as a, as a risk analysis exercise, what the city has to do if it, if Riddick Wood fails and the city steps in to remove it, that's the piece that, that makes it complicated.
So the, the city's going to be on the hook anyways. If something happens and somebody is down there at night and they light the place on fire, the, the structure on fire, we're, you know, TVFNR is gonna come and take care of it, but city's still on the hook for perhaps damage. I don't know. He, he doesn't have any insurance. So he's out of business. So there's no insurance that's going to step in. Um, I don't know. Can we, if we decide not to proceed with this, why can't we just send him a registered letter and give him thirty days to, you know, get it taken down? And if not, we take it down and we just discard it or store it, whatever we feel like we want to do, but why can't we just do that?
Yeah. So, so Councilor McBride, that's a good question. The, the city, we can issue a notice. Um, I would ask, you don't hold me to the thirty days because I want to look at the, the UCC components, but we could give a notice with a fixed period of time by which Riddick Wood needs to take it down. If they don't take it down, um, by that time, the city could, you know, exercise its rights and its right of way to basically demo the, the, this, the street seating, um, and put the materials somewhere for, for a period of time and then eventually discard them if there, if there aren't any rights pursued with respect to those. The, um, I guess the areas of risk or the areas of exposure that, that come to mind just based on council's question so far is what is the city's exposure with respect to damage to that personal property? If Riddick Wood comes out of, no pun intended, the woodworks and says, hey, by the way, you know, we actually do want that personal property. We did come, come to claim it. Providing them that advanced notice doesn't necessarily erase their personal property rights. Um, um, absolutely, if you will.
Councilor Holloman?
This one is, is really tough for me because I value the street seat program. I think it's a creative way for downtown businesses to be able to expand their reach and um, have outdoor seating, which I think is great for downtown. Um, that said, I, I hear what Chief Cosmic is saying. I hear what Councilor Wheatley is, is talking about. That said, I, I hear what Chief Cosmicke is saying. I hear what Counselor Wheatley is, is talking about. So probably not one I'm gonna die on the hill for. But I do feel, I wanna, I want reassurance that the business owner has been communicated with. And that we're having active compassionate conversations with this individual who served our community for twelve years. And I don't know if he feels. The support, I don't know. But I, I have concern. I know that we want to take a proactive approach of how we're dealing with this. But I also think it's important that we extend grace to small business owners that do go under. And I don't know if ninety days is a reasonable timeline. I don't, we're now at sixty days as Counselor Carmen pointed out. But I would like us to see, I would like to, I, I'm, I'm comfortable standing down the program if we can give him the time that he needs to get his affairs in order.
I would like to hear from Chief Cosmicke as to his opinion as to how long we should leave it vacant on the street.
Well, there's someone that's a lot more involved with statutes on these sort of matters that you pay a lot of money to. And I would listen to him. We obviously discard property after thirty, thirty-one days. But this is, this might be a little different. James brings up the UCR codes. We don't deal with those a lot. So I would absolutely defer to what James thinks we should do. How's that for a punt?
And, and that it, it is, oh.
Thank you, Chief.
But that, that is in and of itself, that could be direction we could receive from counsel. Is just that it is the will of counsel to have those improvements, those street seat improvements dismantled. But we want, you know, consult with Police Department and legal counsel as far as fulfilling the appropriate timelines. And as, as Scott shared, Scott and I haven't had an opportunity to, to discuss this item in depth. So that's something we can flesh out is kind of the step-by-step process of how the city could go about removing the property in a way that minimizes. If not eliminates the exposure for the city with respect to claims under the UCC or other things like that. I think, and you know, Scott, Chief, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's direction we could take today and at least give us a, a path.
And I just, to respond to Counselor Hallman, our approach and our posture has been very, I think, business friendly. And, and open lines of communication. So we feel that we have open lines of communication. And we appreciate the difficulty that a business goes through when they close. And so that's really how we're approaching this. And with your direction, we will continue to approach it in that way.
I, okay, I'll, I'll start with what I think should happen. I do think that it is somewhat of an eyesore. And since the business owner is not going to be there to keep it up, I would like to see it come down. I suspect that a business that's going out of business isn't going to be, isn't going to want to have to pay to take it down. And maybe just leave us hold of the bag. That being said, there's two ways to take it down. And if you go try to pull all the nails and, and salvage the material, it's going to take hours or even a day. I'm sure that our, I'm, I'm speaking for you, Russ, but I'm sure that our public works could take it down in a much shorter period of time. But the material will not be salvageable. So I think we should take it down. I believe we should probably give the sixty days as a maximum timeframe. I believe that we, they should, we should warn them that once, if the city has to take it down, it is not going to be salvageable material. So we can solve that problem and get some agreement. How do you guys feel?
I'm, I think I like that plan. I think I would also be in favor of if they were able to find someone to take over the permit and, and use it as a business. I mean, we all supported that street seating program. You know, so if we give them notice and within that notice, they find someone, then maybe it's not dismantled.
Counselor McBride?
I would agree with what Derek says. If they can get somebody in there, fine, you know. But if not, let's do away with the program, give them the sixty days. So I think that's good.
Wheatley?
My main concern is still the crime. You know, I went by there yesterday. There's piles of stuff there. That is my main concern. If we do decide to keep it. I would, I guess I would want to put stricter parameters on the new business. I don't like to see people using it other than what it's intended for. I mean, right now, there's a lot of garbage behind that building. There's garbage around it. That concerns me. So the property has not been maintained. And if we go another two months, what's it going to look like? So yeah, I am concerned about the state of that property being abandoned right now. And whoever takes it over, I would want to make sure that they know, you know, that they. I don't know, the design, I may want to change the design because I think it's very, it's a comfy place for people to stay that are not patrons. So that's a concern of mine.
So would you like to consider making a, a proposal or a motion here? And I mean, if you, if you feel that we need to make a shorter timeframe, then you know, let's consider doing that as well. But somebody want to make a motion?
I move that we give Riddick and Wood sixty days notice to have the structure removed. And within that timeframe, if it's not removed, the city will have it removed. Also, if they're able to switch the permit over to another user, then the city will take no further action.
So we're, we're directing staff to do what you just said. Is that, is that correct?
I'll second the motion.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Last chance.
I would want to know the legal minimum. Is sixty days the, the minimum that they have? They've already been gone a month. Law can happen in two more months there. Is that the minimum amount of time that they have to have? I mean, if thirty days, if we say, hey, you've already been gone thirty days, you have another thirty days. I'm just concerned the longer, if we can legally do it in thirty days, I would rather do it in thirty days.
And we're, Counselor Wheatley, we're talking about the days by which Riddick Wood has to remove the structure itself or find a. Or presumably the, the owner finds a new tenant. Yeah, so there, there isn't. The timelines I was talking about were surrounding like the, the storage of materials and personal property. So as far as that timeline to find a new tenant, sixty days, you're not limited to sixty days. It could be, it could be thirty days. If, if that's the direction counsel provides.
Then I'm gonna suggest thirty days. It's already been vacant thirty days. There's a lot of crime going on. I would like to see it wrapped up.
Okay, so that is an amendment to the motion for thirty days. So that's what we're gonna discuss right now. Do we want to, I'm sorry? Well, we have a, we, we have a motion and an amendment on the floor. So I'm sorry.
It's his motion. She has to ask him if he, if she, if she's comfortable with amending the motion.
No, ma'am. This, she's made an amendment and for that to be official, we do need a second. So that's what we're discussing right now is whether or not we want to change the timeframe that he suggested from sixty days to thirty days, if it's possible. And again, we're asking staff to investigate and see if that's where we are. Is that a second or? Okay.
So I thought, James, what you'd said earlier is that we, we couldn't really go thirty days. If we go thirty day, days, then we have to store it someplace. And I don't want the city to be, I mean, if they got to take it apart, it's not gonna be salvageable. So I mean, if we went thirty days. Are we not gonna be concerned about whether it's salvageable material? We can just tear it down in thirty days? I mean, how's this gonna work?
Well, again, we're, we're gonna, we're, we're directing staff to investigate this after this meeting. They're not, this is not.
I thought he said that there was some law that we would have to give them longer than thirty days or something like that. That you needed to look into it or something. So I don't know if we can go less than sixty days. That's why I was kind of going along with Derek here. I mean, if we could go shorter, I'm, I'm okay with that, but I, I don't, I gathered we couldn't do that.
It's a, okay, uh, well, thank, thank you, Mayor and Counselor McBride. So the, the legal issue I'm concerned with is the city's obligation to actually store the, the materials that are in, in the timeline. That the city has to comply with as far as the duration of the, of that storage. When it comes to the timing of the notice that comes from the city to say, you need to refine, you need to find another tenant. Or remove the, the improvements yourself, Riddick Wood. The city doesn't have a, a sixty day minimum. The city can make that timeline shorter.
So either way, the city's gonna have to store this then or not? I'm missing something. I don't, I'm not sure.
Right. So, so that's the piece that I want to give, look into and give counsel more guidance on the duration. So when the city, so maybe let's just kind of walk through, thinking through the timeline. So the city can issue a notice and say, hey, in sixty days, let's say. Or let's just say thirty days under Counselor Wheatley's thought, thirty days that Riddick Wood needs to find another tenant. Or take down the improvements themselves, or the city will take it down. So, so that notice would say on day thirty, the city is going to step in if another tenant doesn't step in. The timeline, where more strict timelines may come in is, okay, day thirty comes. Day thirty-one, the city comes and takes down those improvements. What does the city have to do with those materials in terms of storage? And then how long do we have to store those materials after the teardown? That's the.
But if it's, it's, but if it's in horrible condition, what difference does it make? They're not gonna want it. So why do we?
All right, I'm gonna bring this back. We have a, we have an amendment on the table. Does anybody want to give a second to the thirty day time period? All right, we are back to that, that does for lack of a second. So we're back to our original discussion of a sixty day time period. Go ahead, Mike. All right, if there's no more discussion, let's have a vote. All in favor of Derek's motion? Of giving the, asking our staff to try to give them a sixty day notice. To tear it down at their expense before the city will do it at our expense. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. All opposed? That motion passes. So is that sufficient direction for staff?
Yes, and I also heard in Counselor Carmen's motion that if the owner is successful in securing a new tenant. We would want to see evidence of that, of course, but that would allow them to renew or, or extend it. Is that right?
I do too. That's it. I agree.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the ordinance creating a craft industrial zoning district.
Evening, council members, mayor. As you may recall, back in April, we had a update on the craft industrial district. I might clicker here, going forward on the west end of downtown. Other way. Perfect, okay. So back in April, you may recall, we had an update on the craft industrial district on the west end of downtown. As part of the twenty sixteen, this project started off in twenty sixteen as part of the downtown improvement plan. To keep the west end of downtown more of as a industrial gritty feeling. And kind of a different area from the core of downtown we have down here. And so prior work on this craft industrial district took place from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one. Including a transportation planning rule analysis. It was put on hiatus due to COVID and staff turnover. And then you guys approved the twenty twenty-four Planning Division Work Plan last January. So we've been working on this. And so the purpose is where goods can be sampled, touched. And so it's basically an industrial, smaller industrial area with a retail component to it. And focusing on tourism and the appeal of goods produced locally. So the area is roughly bounded by where the couplet starts on the west end, going up to where Main Street, Highway two forty. And then up to the railroad tracks on Main Street includes that block just to the east of Main Street. Includes Papa Murphy's and a few others, which I'll show you here. So includes the mill, gym one hundred, raise produce. Excuse me.
Can I interrupt you?
Yeah, go ahead.
We, we want to wear this as a legislative hearing.
Oh, sorry.
I have some official things I have to do here. First of all, I, I, I call this legislative hearing to order. At this point, this is the opportunity for the counselors to declare conflicts of interest or abstentions. Are there any declarations? All right, hearing none. We're up to staff.
All right, we'll, we'll keep going. So as mentioned, twenty sixteen started some turnover. And we re-kicked off the project. As I mentioned, the area right around that was sent downtown by the couplet and then going up to the railroad tracks on Main Street. Current zoning is a combination of the C three, your central business district, district, which is your downtown. And then M two, which is our light industrial district. And the current comprehensive plan is commercial and industrial. So the proposal would be to change the comprehensive plan from the commercial and industrial to a mixed use. And then the zoning from that commercial, the C three and the M two to a M five, which is our crafting, which would be the craft industrial district. So that's the current existing on top and then the bottom as far as the comprehensive plan. And the zoning would be changed to the M five. So the full amendments, you can see in exhibit eight three, but I'll go through some of those for you tonight. So it adds some new definitions, including the craft industrial, which is the manufacturing, processing, fabrication of assemblies of goods with associated retail. And then also add a live work unit so people could physically live in the place that they work. We create a new district at small scale with that commercial component. It's intended to complement the existing commercial uses downtown, promoting tourism and promoting local products. And we did do some cleanup. So there's a food and beverage category, industrial category and our craft industrial category. We were separating all those out. There was some confusion around those. So we made sure the food one was separate by itself. So the new craft industrial category, what I tell people to think of, think of like glass bowling or woodworking with a retail component. It excludes from light manufacturing because of the commercial component and then food and beverage because they don't include it. And the manufacturing uses without the retail sales component would be classified as light manufacturing. And then as far as residential uses in the current zoning districts on the left, there you have C three and M two. The, would still be allowed to have multifamily and mixed use with dwellings on the ground floor. But also keep the caretaker dwelling unit that's currently allowed in the M two light industrial and add that live work unit. The single family dwelling that's allowed in the C three district would go away as well as duplexes. So there's still residential options. There is only one single family house in the district, so that would be legal non-con. There is only one single family house in the district, so that would be legal non-conforming. And I'm getting to the next part. So basically, all the uses that are allowed in the C three and M two districts are allowed in the new M five districts. Um, prohibited uses that were previously allowed in the M two, which are light industrial, heavy manufacturing, self-storage, uh, warehousing, unless it was rail oriented, and that was a change the Planning Commission um made a recommendation on uh, for ultra quiet floors in that area next adjacent to the railroad. So it had to be rail oriented. Just because it does, those uses don't generate a lot of foot traffic. They're not really a commercial use. Um, they're not generating a lot of traffic. So and then it would add the new craft industrial as a use on the table and subject to special use conditions or conditional use permit if it can't meet the criteria.
While you're on this slide, can I ask a question about the marijuana producer? What do, I don't understand that part.
So there's a, sure. So there's a special overlay for recreation, marijuana uses. And that was one of the uses that is allowed in the M two di- district, uh, outdoor recreational marijuana producer. So that use would go away. So there's, there's marijuana, like retail, there's marijuana producing, there's outdoor recreational producers. There's, there's a fair amount of categories that are marijuana related. Um, this would prevent the outdoor recreational marijuana. So it would still, so.
That's the part I don't understand. What do, what is an outdoor recreational marijuana producer?
They would, they would grow their marijuana outside, basically. The, then they would, yes, they would sell it to whoever to process it or process it themselves themselves, yeah. And so just the railroad adjacent properties, it just says rail oriented, doesn't have to be next to railroad, but just those properties that are highlighted till they're adjacent to the railroad. Um, the other changes with the proposed district, it would change the minimum lot size for the M two, which is I believe seven properties to five thousand square feet to be consistent with the current C three. And then minimum setbacks of zero feet with a maximum of twenty. Unless they're a budding residential for the interior, then it's a ten foot. And then something that did get changed from the Planning Commission previously in a work session was that the height was, there's no maximum building height, but unless it was a budding from a residential and they did a bust unless a budding are across an alley from a residential. So it would limit it to that, or the fifty feet from the residential, it would limit it to in this case, I believe it's R two next to it, which would limit it to thirty-five feet in height. So they're not overshadowing the neighboring residential district. Um, I know we had a brief discussion about off-street parking earlier. Uh, so there's no proposed off-street parking unless it's a budding or across an alley from a residential district. Then no landscaping requirements unless they were in song parking or loading areas, and it's reduced if they are. Street seats would still be required in planter strips and then um you could also have the outdoor cafe style seating. Um, provided you can provide all ADA standards. So we're not talking in the street on this case, we're talking on the sidewalk. So just to be clear, it's, that's what we're just having that street seats discussion. So that was clear. Um, so and then we have certain standards for live work units being proposed. So seventy-five percent of structure, street front facade, street level should be occupied by non-residential uses. That's your business use facing the street. So it's it's clear in centers, you don't have the residential on the streets. You're trying to provide that, that frontage. Um, floor height thirteen feet. They have to provide off-street parking. Can't be located within the structure, street, front facade in the street, and then the primary entrance oriented towards the street. Or common courtyard if there was a cluster of businesses. And then the sign code would change a little bit. It would allow for electronic message centers. But it would be limited. So currently, C, our C three, our downtown business district has its own sign standards as far as discretionary points or certain standards, whether you have to have it round or the font of letters. And that would go away with this. It would allow the alternating message uh and static messages. But other, all the other sign codes would still apply. So the special use standards for the craft industrial, so the retail use, at least twenty-five percent of the gross floor area has to be used for retail or similar customer use with a minimum of a thousand square feet. And it has, cannot be next to residential, which I don't believe anything actually buts residential directly. Uh, size limit, production areas limited to ten thousand square feet, outdoor storage, less than ten percent has to be screened. And then they have to demonstrate compliance. If they don't or go above those thresholds, it would require a conditional use permit, which would be heard by the Planning Commission. And with that, staff would recommend you adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five, twenty-nine, thirty as presented, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, before we do that, we do have a public comment today. Um, Rachel, could you put one of the first screens had the overlay of the area, and then we're gonna hear from Chris Waldrop. And I know that we're gonna ask you to come back up in a minute. You're, you're in favor of this? Okay. Please proceed. Sorry, Merrill. Come on back up.
All right, I'm on, y'all. Okay, good evening, members of council. My name is Merrill Conkle Still. I am still Director of Operations at the Shaheenland Valley Chamber of Commerce. Um, the chamber supports establishing the craft industrial district in Newburgh. This initiative aligns with the chamber's mission to foster economic growth and development in our region by creating a mixed-use zoning district that encourages light industrial businesses alongside live workspaces. This ordinance provides the opportunity and foundation for an economic hub in the west end of downtown. The craft industrial represents a unique opportunity to attract and retain businesses that could provide jobs, support local entrepreneurs, and enhance our community's economic resilience. We are particularly encouraged by the flexibility in zoning standards, which reduces barriers for new and expanding businesses. The integration of business needs such as updated food production standards, electronic signage options. Um, the inclusion of craft industrial uses, which will highlight Newburgh's creative and innovative spirit. This district helps preserve the industrial character of the area while meeting the evolving needs of our local businesses. The Shaheenland Valley Chamber of Commerce supports this ordinance, and we urge the council to adopt it as a step toward growing our local economy. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're back to, does anybody have questions for our staff member?
Okay, to sum it up, basically, you can live where you weren't able to live there. Correct? They, they made the buildings smaller, so smaller businesses could go in. Is that basically?
So I wouldn't say you couldn't live there. Um, there's a lot of limitations to that. Um, you could have like a mixed-use building on the ground floor. There are certain criteria as far as like single family. So the live work unit option is a new. But now, yes, that's a new option that wasn't previously available. Um, I'm sorry, what is the second one?
Oh, the square footage for the buildings is smaller.
So that, so the square footage for the buildings isn't necessarily smaller, it's a lot size. So the, the current M two zoning, um, and I, I guess just backed up here a few slides here. So the, that's the current zoning here is the, the red there is the C three district, the M two is the light industrial. So the M two currently has a twenty thousand square foot lot size. And the C three is five thousand. The M two would come down to that five thousand square foot lot size. So it would theoretically, people could get smaller lots in that area. A lot of it's already less than twenty thousand, but it would open up some more opportunity.
So it, so this would be for people wanting to build a unit. Cause I'm looking at it, it looks like it's mainly built out, but i- is that correct? This is for new construction? Mainly?
So you're right, most of the area is currently built out. Um, there's one kinda green space area in there. Uh, new construction would be subject to all the standards. So this isn't necessarily affecting current businesses is, is what you're getting at. Sure.
I, I think the key thing here is, and it's actually hearkening back to a, a very old way of doing business, which existed in the early republic, which was that there would be an artisan or a maker who would live in the building and be able to manufacture and live on the premises so as to do it affordably. Now, the thing about this is while that is substantially built out in the northern sector, if one of those owners decided to turn their business over and break it out into separate sections, there would just be more flexibility for them to do so. But of course, they don't have to.
Okay, so before it had to be a bigger space, and now you're kind of allowing it to be split up into smaller into a smaller space, and you could possibly live there. So that's the main benefit. Correct?
Yeah, there's, there's multiple benefits. So you could theoretically split up um the properties. I mean, you could do multi-tenants in a building too. I mean, you could do that even now under current zoning. Um, assuming the uses are allowed. But this opens it up a lot, whether this live work unit, craft industrial. You can still have restaurants, all, all of that's still available to the current owners, future owners. Um, so that there's, it's just more open. Also, if they were to expand or want to expand their building, um, there's also no maximum lot covers, there's no setback requirements outside of easements, or if they're a budding or across residential. So it allows them to, to do that expansion, assuming they want to or need to.
So, I mean, you guys deal with this. Is, are you seeing that this will help people wanting to do business here? Are you seeing a need for this? Are people wanting to come here and you're having to turn them away because there isn't a zone for them? So is this solving a big problem for people?
So we've had, I will say we've had limited inquiries. We've had one or two inquiries from a current property owner in the area. Besides that, I haven't heard anything. Um, a friend from the chamber may have heard other things that I'm not aware of. Um, but it, it does open up, I think Director Siegel may have something else too he wants to say.
Yeah, I think that sort of the policy objectives and vision behind this came out of the downtown improvement plan, where there was a community process that sort of raised awareness and and asked for more flexibility in this area. So there are a number of properties in there that, uh, you know, this change could be a catalyst. Um, and, you know, what history will tell. But we're trying to enable um forward, forward movement here.
Can I add something? My understanding too, to Counselor Wheatley's question, which is a good one, is that um downtown coalition has been working since the downtown revitalization plan around really trying to center Newburgh in art. And that, this really would be like the flagship hub of the art of expansion from the cultural district into a maker's space. And so while there may not be inquiries, I know there's a committee and there's a, an entire group of people working on this. So I do think that it would be like a really, a really cool addition to the area.
So I have a follow-up to that. The biggest building in this district is going to be the Shaheenland Valley Mill Building. It's also one of the least utilized buildings in our city. Is the property owner that owns that in favor of this? And is this going to help to get that building uh developed?
I have had conversations with the property owner that owns that property. It's definitely a possibility. I can't say for certain what they're gonna do with it. Um, as far as the biggest building, I don't think it's exactly the biggest building, probably where Crested Sellers is, it's probably actually the biggest building in the area. Um, but, yes, I.
I'm sorry, looking at the map, I didn't realize the south part of that is because it's colored in red. I didn't realize that was included. I, that, that's my, my bad. So, um, I know that they're, like Counselor Elise said, there, they have been working on this a long time. And uh I, I, I have to assume that if any of the business owners were not in favor of this, that they would have brought it to our attention at this time, by this time. So, any more discussion? Your Counselor McBride?
So next to gym one hundred, there's uh that um Teriyaki place. Nara Teriyaki, yeah. So why, why don't you have them specifically listed like the other ones? I mean, they're right there, they're.
They are included in the, in this, yes, they are included and restaurants are still a permitted use in the, in the new district.
Yeah, Newsburg's over there too. Um, you got the tire shop, you have the new dispensary for the uh, that is not, that's, so basically where the railroad track is going across Maine is the, the boundary district there, going north.
So I didn't take care of a little piece of, uh, at this point, I want to close public testimony. And you've already made your recommendation, but this is the right time to do it. So let's do it again.
All right, staff would still recommend you adopt ordinance twenty twenty-five, twenty-nine, thirty as presented. And it's up to council if they would choose to um wait the second reading.
Okay, so this is the point for deliberation. Is there any further deliberation on this item? Go ahead.
Okay. I know you already explained it. Try one more time so I can understand it. The weed growing outside, what is that?
That would be prohibited.
That's a good soundbite for the next person that wants to run against me.
So as far as the outdoor marijuana production, so yeah, you would, you'd have your my understanding is you would have your plans outside growing it, and then you would transport it to a processor, process it on site, and then take it to. I, I'm not.
I, I understand what that is. I, I am more so mean, is it, it's not legal to do that currently in the, in the downtown area or?
It is not legal in the C three. It is currently allowed in the M two district. So that area, that north portion, yeah. So that would be prohibited.
Which is my question, um, why didn't we, why didn't we uh make prohibit indoor marijuana growing? Because we've, what we've all noticed is, uh, even though it's indoors, it still has quite a, uh, an odor.
If that's an amendment council would like to make, we can certainly do that.
So it would be okay to prohibit indoor marijuana production in this area if we chose?
James?
Maybe that's a question for James.
Yeah, we'd have to, I, I don't know if, cause if we prohibit indoor and outdoor, that's a pretty comprehensive um prohibition uh that may be subject to challenge. Um, if that's something council's interested in, we could look into that. But I think that that, that could be problematic.
Might I suggest that for the good of the future three D printing, glass blowing, metalworking and other great trades and especially three D printing, because I think you have not remotely seen the bottom price point on three D printers yet. For all of those reasons, I would suggest that we should press on with the the this item and and consider later amendments if we wish to.
So as proposed currently, uh, indoor recreational marijuana producer would require a conditional use permit. So that would require a hearing with the planning commission, who also has to find it compatible with the neighborhood. Um, there's additional criteria as far as how it impacts neighboring developments, so. Not saying it couldn't be approved under the current proposal, but it is an extra step they would have to take.
So it's time for decision, uh, would anybody like to make a motion? Counselor Carmen.
A move that we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty five, twenty nine thirty and read by title only.
We, so thank you, Counselor Carmen.
Up every time.
Uh, what we, what we may want to do and uh, uh, Counselor Tergerson, welcome on the on the um, legislative front, well, well, we typically council has two votes, one is uh, to waive the second reading. Um, by kind of council rule and policy, typically ordinance have to come before council twice in order to be adopted. Uh, however, council can by a majority vote of the entire council uh, waive the second reading and kind of bypass that that step or that requirement. And then the second vote, if that vote is approved, would be um, uh, exactly what Counselor Carmen already laid out, which would be to adopt the ordinance and um, read by title only, reading by title only allows me just to read the title and not have to read the entire ordinance um, in in open session.
Mister Mayor, can I change my motion?
Yes, please.
Uh, I move that we waive the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five, twenty nine thirty.
Second.
Alright, been moved and seconded, we waived the second reading, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Alright, would you like to take another stab at the other half of this?
Yes, sir, uh, I move that we adopt ordinance twenty twenty five, twenty nine thirty and read by title only.
Second.
Alright, it has been moved and seconded that we approved ordinance twenty twenty five dash twenty nine thirty, read read by title only. Is there any more discussion?
And I'm, I'm ready to read when whenever you uh, queue me, Mayor.
Alright, it's your turn.
Thank you, so in front of the council for adoption is ordinance number twenty twenty five dash two nine three zero and ordinance amending the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan Map, City of Newburgh Zoning Map and Newburgh Municipal Code Title fifteen for the creation of a craft industrial district.
It's hard to believe that's just the title, is there any further deliberations? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, that vote needs to be by roll call, Rachel, you should have yelled at me.
I should have, Counselor McBride.
Yes.
Counselor Wheatley.
Yes.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman.
Yes.
Mayor Rosacker.
Yes.
Counselor Tergerson.
Yes.
And Counselor Carmen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you guys want to take a five minute break or we've got another meeting right after this, we could do that now and and then Yeah, there's there's more to go on here, oh, this, let's go ahead and take a five minute break. Alright, let's come back to order. So our next item on our agenda is the uh, election of council president, do we have any nominations?
Who is it currently?
Peggy.
Do we have to change it every year?
We could renominate Peggy.
I nominate Peggy.
And she's not here, that's kind of a dirty thing to do, but okay. That's usually the the clubs I belong to, that's usually how it happens. Alright, are there any other nominations? Alright, all in favor of Peggy?
Wait, I'll make a nomination.
Would go ahead.
I nominate Eric.
Is there?
Can I have be the new person and ask what the process is?
It's a, the the sole duty of the council president is to uh, run the meeting should I not be available, so.
Honorable Mayor, there is one other duty.
And what would that be?
In the event of a disaster, should we have to activate the emergency operations center? That person is second in chain of succession in the event that the mayor is incapacitated.
I yeah, I stand corrected. Yes, sir.
Uh, because of that, I cannot accept um, a nomination. Um, appreciate it, thank you, uh, but I know we've rotated it twice, first it was Mike and then it was Peggy and I'm in favor of rotating it again and I would nominate Elise, she's the most senior person on the council.
I was like in that. So this is, it, any other nomination? Alright, so what we are going to need to nominate one of them is a majority of the quorum, which is four. So we will uh, have you name which of the two candidates that you choose and see how it comes out, and if it, if we don't have a first ballot winner, then we will have a second ballot. So, in that being said, Robin? Choose, choose.
Oh, shoot, I guess since Peggy's not here, I'll go with Elise.
Uh, okay, go ahead, he wasn't looking, Derek?
Sorry, I thought it was given uh, Elise.
Elise.
You don't have to vote for yourself today, you 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 don't have to, the new council
No, I would like her to vote for herself.
Okay. Alright, Elise, congratulations, and so we have a discussion of veterans flagged and other veteran issues. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, council commissioner report, this is uh, Robin's, the is on the historic preservation committee and she has an update for us. Robin, I know you're ready now, but hold your water for a minute, I skipped something else first. We're gonna talk about can council committee appointments. And I do hope that you have a slide to put up on that, yes, Will.
So so I'm the staff person for that one and would you be able to, Rachel, put up the slide that has attachment one pursuant to appointment of city councillors to serve on subcommittees and partner organizations? Okay, we're gonna bring that up, it was in the packet as attachment number one, but let me give a quick overview. So to get to this point, the first thing we did is we went over the list of all of the various subcommittees that councillors have to serve on and we gave people choices to make between their first, second, third or fourth choice, then sorted them all to the left. And I did my very best, I even have the scratch paper here. Just really, really hard to read, cause my handwriting is not great. So this is the scratch paper, and so we pushed people over to try to give them their, did that by enough time, awesome. So that gave the people either their first, second or third choice in almost all cases. Now, the recommendation that is on this request for council action, there's actually two options here, so either after some deliberation, you could choose to go with the list as it was sorted, as it is now on the screen. Or I did foresee the possibility that there might be some horse trading might happen. And if that does happen, then I've got a second eh, recommendation in here. If debate changes assignments to go to, I move that we accept council subcommittee appointments set forth in attachment one as modified by our deliberations, so that leaves that door open to some discussion. And of course, here's the executive summary, periodically city council needs to take stock of its council appointments and assign new councillors to the many subcommittees. Prior to the meeting, councillors expressed their subcommittee interests. The best attempt possible was made to ensure that councillors gained the assignments that most closely matched their first, second or third favorite choice and that even number positions were assigned. Naturally, this isn't, does not include the two Nura appointments, those would be handled in the separate Nura meeting. And those are colored differently on the screen, thank you.
Uh, Mister Worthy, one of our extremely intelligent councillors pointed out that we do not have the uh, chamber liaisons on on this matrix.
Oh.
Never mind. So do you wanna, do you wanna go ahead and handle the rest of this or?
Well, that's that's kind of, I think that's the staff part completed, it's if you like the way this sh- shook out and we did our best to give everybody a fair shake, then you would go with simply moving to accept the appointments as set forth. Or if you wish to debate it further and maybe do some horse trading around, you could do that.
Counselor Wheatley.
I would like to do some horse trading, um, I did get permission from Counselor Kilberg to switch and put me in the Historic Preservation Commission. So um, I would like to be, I'm in there now and I would like to continue to be in that commission and um, Counselor Kilberg has given me her blessing.
And she did not want anything in return? She'd have to be one less appointment?
I believe so, let me check my texts just to make sure.
Is there anybody else who would like to consider trading one of their positions or or is not happy with one of their appointments? Or all of them? Nicely done. Alright, shall we?
You had me mentioned that you wanted to maybe take the wine marketing, is that something that you still would like to do? We'll trade that up, that's okay with the rest of council.
Can it be explained I'm an alternate, what does that mean?
A few of them, a few of them have a designated backup person, that's what that's um.
Well, um, th- there's a little more to that, it's not yet an ad- uh, an official ad hoc committee, so we uh, have to watch for the quorum, once we make it ad hoc, I'm on the committee as well. And we could then uh, have all three of us on there without any problem.
Then why?
Actually, we can have three now, so let's just add couns- uh, Counselor Wheatley to that. Is that, is that okay with every- everybody?
I take Derek's spot and then do you want one of my committees or do you, what what's your preference?
Uh, I wouldn't mind being more involved in um, well, I guess you have.
I only have two committees, I think. So I think I have the, cause I'm li- I'm not on taste, so I'm on Chamber and Downtown Coalition. Which are pretty small. Is there a way that um, is there a way that Derek and I could um, do NDC together? NDC Downtown Coalition?
And certainly no problem.
And that'd actually be helpful, because there's a lot of times where I can't attend the meeting because it's during the day.
Okay, so just to make sure I've got this accurately, the wine marketing ad hoc, Counselor Carmen is coming off of that. And Yarnell Holloman going on, is that correct? Okay. And then the other shift was for NDC to have Counselor Carmen join you on NDC, is that correct? I have captured that.
So the wine marketing, the meeting tomorrow, I'm, I don't show up, correct? Okay, that's fine, I just wanna make sure I'm got everything straight.
Honorable Mayor, would you like me to restate the changes for the record? So, the changes to the attachment are for Historic Preservation Commission. Counselor Kilberg rotating off of that slot and Counselor Wheatley coming on. Wine marketing ad hoc, Counselor Carmen coming off and Counselor Yarnell Holloman coming on. And then for NDC, Counselor Yarnell Holloman will be joined by Counselor Carmen.
Now, I would like to suggest that the um, the title of the wine meeting should be the Wine Industry Ad hoc Committee, not Wine Marketing. We don't sell things here. So uh, everybody okay with that? I guess if you are, signify by saying yes. No, if you're not, sounds good, thank you, Will.
Yes, so in other words, the um, that you guys have accepted the council subcommittee appointments as set forth in attachment one as modified by the deliberations, thank you.
Now, Counselor Wheatley, it's time for your update of your meeting, and by the way, this is going to be an agenda item on every meeting. So whichever group you are associated with, we would like to have a report at the meeting toward the end as we're doing now.
Okay, um, as your ex officio on the Historic Preservation Commission, I have a little something to read to you. Um, so I come to you today because we have an opportunity to launch some of this work right now. This year, we are eligible for a certified local government grant of up to sixteen thousand. The application is due on February twenty eighth. The Historic Preservation Commission would like to submit an application for this grant in order to begin the refresh of Newburgh's historic resource inventory. Um, as the work plan has not yet been approved, I am asking council to make a motion to approve this application ahead of the full work plan. Should we wait until the full work plan is complete, progress on this goal will be delayed for another year until we are eligible to receive this grant again. So basically, we we won't be meeting again until March with the full plan, but we would really like to move on this grant, and so we need council's approval now so we can start on the grant. Um, basically, um, it would be refreshing, the first piece for the grant would be refreshing the thirty year old historic resource inventory, apparently it hasn't been done in thirty years, so um, so someone with the grant money, the sixteen thousand dollar grant money will go around to the businesses and see you know, they'll look at the inventory and say, is this still, is this building still here, does it need to be, does it need to come off the registry, do we need to add? Um, so um, I'm in favor of this, I'm I'm hoping the council will vote to proceed on this, cause our downtown is a resource, I think we haven't been utilizing it um, as well as we could, so I'm asking for your vote, yes.
Would you go ahead and make a motion?
I move we accept um, the work plan, wh- where is it? What would a motion be? What would a motion be? I, I move we accept the, the sixteen thousand dollar grant? Approve. I, I approve, I, I move we approve the, um, application for the grant.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, passes unanimously. So veteran flags and other veteran issues. I don't know who's presenting. Mike, okay.
Okay, so, uh, in October, I met two different times with the local veterans, um, group, and just was trying to find out what could the city do, uh, to help them out, and a couple of things came out, is they would like to be able to have the signs that we have downtown on the poles, you know, for George Fox and stuff like that. They would like to be able to do something like that. They'll pay for the signs, they just wanted to know if the city would be willing to put them up and take them down like we do for George Fox already. So I'm bringing that before the council, see how you all feel about that. And the other thing is, is there is a Veterans Resource Officer in McMinnville, and a lot of the veterans here are, it's hard for them to get around, and so I asked, I, I mentioned, well, would have, if we had a, a desk someplace at City Hall, off in the corner where we could get that resource officer from McMinnville to come over here to Newburgh once or twice a week, would that be, uh, helpful to you? And that way, you know, you can go down to City Hall, you can go in there and talk to that person, and that seemed to be something that was very interested, uh, interesting to them. So I told them that I would bring that up before the council also. So I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I think it'd be something that we could help them out, and I was told I've got to get over to Murray Street. I guess Murray Street or Murray Boulevard is phenomenal, and so I don't know how, I mean, it's up to them to do some, some fundraising or whatever, but I think it'd be kind of cool to, even if some of our local youth was going into the military, we could have a picture of them up on a, a flag on one of the poles down, down on Hancock or something like that, so.
I'm definitely in support of this, because my son just enlisted in the Air Force, so, um, but I have a question. So they, the flags would have somebody's name on it, like a veteran or an active duty? Is that how it would work? Like in Beaverton, I've seen the names in Beaverton.
We could do that, or just something that says, you know, we support our veterans, or, you know, you know, we have a one for, for the Navy, and then the next sign might be one for the Army, something like that. But I, I think we should leave it up to them, uh, kind of how they want it designed, or how, how they want it to look, um, and that type of thing, but, I don't know, they pay for it, and we just use the, our equipment and our man hours to put it up and down.
Can I, so, um, this was a, a project that Mayor Andrews worked on for a long time, probably like twenty sixteen to twenty eighteen, nineteen, and the issue we ran into that we settled for the veterans' parking spots is that ODOT would not let us do that. And I, so I don't know, and I know we're just referencing where we put our, our flags, but we went through a whole application and were denied. So I don't know, this was a, like, literally a two-year process that, the, because the previous, the council had a number of veterans on the council too, like we have currently, and tried to really, that was like Bob's number one thing he wanted to get across the finish line.
Okay, so why would that be a problem? If we already put signs up there, what difference does it make if you have something that says something about George Fox, and you, and you have something that says something about the veterans?
I, I'm not gonna, I'm not, I don't want to botch it, because I don't remember the exact reason, but it had to do with the specific poles that they were on, and the number of poles that we wanted to have, because we were, we were pursuing veterans like on Murray. That's where we got the, that, when that happened, we tried to do the same thing, and it was shot down.
Well, let's just do every other, or every three poles or something like that.
But that was six years ago, so things could change.
Well, let's just do it and not tell them.
That's fine. So you can, I'll support that.
There, you know, the other issue would be, Emily's not here, but last year, Fox provided those signs for us, and I'm not sure that we would want to, uh, take them down without their permission, so maybe we should investigate rather than just jump in and try to.
I, I didn't mean to take down George Fox's signs. I'm just, because they don't have them up all the time, or if they want them up all the time, we put it on another pole, maybe two poles down or something like that. Do you understand what I'm saying? Okay.
I love the idea, and I, and I love the idea of having names, um, and I love the idea that they stay up year-round like they do on Murray.
Is that what that is, year-round?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
And if that's not possible on Highway ninety-nine, uh, for whatever reason, ODOT may determine, it'd be nice if we can identify another main that we can do that on.
We'd have the same problem with ODOT on, on Hancock, but there's certainly a memorial park, we could put them all around the perimeter of that, we could do it down River Street, uh, you know, some other street that ODOT is not in control of if we wanted. I think it's a great idea.
But why, why would ODOT care if we're already doing it? I mean, I'm, I'm not saying, are you, are you referring that they would, because we'd be adding another sign, another flag up there, that they're, they would be against that? Or I'm, I'm kind of thinking, George Fox takes theirs down every once in a while, they don't leave them up all the time. Are they up all the time?
Perhaps I can provide some background information to council, as I am the person that worked on the flag, uh, and banner, uh, item. We currently have a permit, forty signs, forty flags, on ODOT Right-Away. To add additional flags on there would void the current permit, which is grandfathered in under the old permitting program. We would have to go under the new ODOT permitting program, which is even more restringent than the one that we went under. We're also permitted by PGE, because they're on PGE poles for those forty flags, we would have to void that permit and get an additional permit if we added any additional, uh, signs. When we had the, uh, uh, the games here, we had to get a waiver from the governor's office to put up in place of the signs that were there, because there's limiting language that can be on those signs. You, you can't recognize a person, date, uh, or anything of that nature, uh, is why it was dis, uh, denied. What we did at that time is we contacted the local businesses off the Right-Away, which was Newburgh Dodge, Newburgh Chevy, Newburgh Ford, and had their own light poles, and we've got signs that we put up on those poles, and, and we did have some up for a period of time. Those individuals left the service, we took this, took the banners down and gave them to them or their families, uh, at that time. We can do whatever we want off of ODOT Right-Away, provided if it's on a PGE-owned pole, we get a permit from them to do that, uh, and that would require them to approve the mounting hardware, the brackets and all of that. But that's, that's what happened with the ODOT Right-Away permit, which is Hancock, First Street, ninety-nine W, Portland Road, uh, through town.
Okay, so VFW on President's Day and all kinds of, you know, Fourth of July, they'll put flags up, because there's a, there's a slot at my business, they'll put a flag, and they've got them out here on ninety-nine. Well, why don't we just put some little slots along on our sidewalks and have a flag? We get around it that way.
It's, and it is ODOT Right-Away, all the way to the frontage of the building where the sidewalks are located, just to let you know. And, and the permit required, permits required if it's up for a extended period of time.
So I'm just out of curiosity, Russ, you probably know more about this than any of us, how would we go about getting the names of the veterans who live in our cities?
That was another hard one. The vet, the veteran group actually went and did a canvassing, uh, through town and came up with the names that they put up that were currently serving, uh, with that. We obviously missed some folks, and once we put one up, we found out who we missed, uh, as they came forward. And to let you know, I did contact Beaverton with Murray Boulevard, and that's how, if, if anybody recognized it when it first went up, there was only probably twenty, and that's how they expanded their program to the entire length of Murray.
Any idea what the numbers were or would be? No?
At the, when we did it initially, we had four, we ended up with, with, uh, twelve. I think we also had it at the church off of, uh, Mountain View Drive, we utilized their poles too.
Go ahead, Mike.
I got it. Okay, got it fixed. So if the veterans put up the, the, the flags, why don't, why don't we just use the same thing? We're not going to add any extra anywhere else, use the same, same slots and holes, same businesses, because they put up the flags at certain times throughout the year, why can't they, why can't they just do that there? We've already got that location already added in, there's, or, or is it, because I don't think that they go through and probably fill out a form and tell the state, this is how many flags we're putting up, because they never had anything at my place before until I started opening up my business there, and then they came to me and said, hey.
I can't speak to whether they do or do not have a permit for their flags on the ODOT Right-Away.
Is this something we could talk to Beth Watowski with Regional Solutions about supporting us through a process with ODOT?
I think that's a great idea. On the other hand, no matter what they say, I think that I like Russ's idea of finding other places in the city off the, I mean, that might be simpler just to plan to do that rather than try to change what ODOT has already allowed us to do, um, but that's my opinion. So, Will, can we, uh, can we just ask you to go ahead and, and look into this for us and see what we can get away with?
So, two things. First of all, the first part, let's take these two bits separately. I've already identified a desk and office supplies and things that can be used. All I need would be, Mike, if you can put me in touch with the person you were speaking to, I'd like to get them background checked so that I can give them a badge so they can come up to the second floor. It would make their workflow a lot easier, they could, then they could come and go, okay? Um, with respect to the second part, yes, we can look at alternative locations. Once again, if you could connect me with, I don't know whether it was the Legion or VFWs, but if you could connect me with whichever group it was, to look at what the cost would be, and we can look at alternative locations. And then also, in parallel, we could reach out to Beth and see if we could get that saleness overturned, because it seems to me that the period in the middle of the year, from basically Memorial Day through the Fourth of July, I don't think George Fox would be mad at us if, say, for example, in that time window, we took them down and put those flags up, everybody would be happy. That's right, thank you. Shall we, so yes, I'll pursue those things, and we can do the first thing immediately.
Well, the, uh, last item on our meeting is to adjourn, so we're adjourned.
All right, welcome everyone to the January sixth, uh, Newburgh Urban Renewal Agency Meeting. Uh, I call the meeting to order. Uh, roll call, please.
Councillor McBride.
Here.
McBride. Wheatley?
Yes.
Yarnell Holloman?
Yes.
Um, Mayor Roserker?
Here.
Turgerson?
Yes.
And Cartman?
Here.
And councillor Kilburg is absent.
Okay, so we need to, um, decide on a Nura board chair, a vice chair, and the CAC chair. Are there any recommendations or nominations for the board chair for Nura?
I would like to nominate Derek, right? Our current chair.
A second.
I think he's doing a great job.
Sorry, everyone, I'm also okay with someone who lives in the district, um, in switching it up if you're going a different direction.
That'd be Jerry.
Or, or Elise.
Southside representative.
I was, I was thinking I'd like to nominate Robin Wheatley. She's not been chairman of a committee yet, it's her third year, and I think it's time.
You're so kind, I don't know that I'm ready yet, but it's up to you guys. Yes, I would love some practice, but I'm fine with, Derek has done a great job, and Jerry, I'm fine with either, but I, I guess I would accept it.
All right, so should we just do the same process that we did with, uh?
Are you interested in staying in the chair position?
Uh, I'm interested in whatever the will of.
Oh, how annoying.
Agency is.
That's two ways you want it.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm, I talked to Will a bit, and, uh, I'm used to hearing that, the will of whatever.
Well, Robin, are you interested in it? Because if you're interested in it, that, I want to vote for who wants it.
Um, not necessarily, um, I mean, yes, I do want to chair a meeting eventually, but I want to be ready for it, so I don't, yes.
I think, well, actually, Citizens Advisory Committee Chair, why don't you do that? That'd be a good one for you.
That's a next one.
Do you accept that nomination or no?
I will say, I will say no, but I would do the chair. Isn't Peggy the, 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 um, the Citizens Advisory Chair, isn't Peggy the chair?
Yes, so.
She was just appointed to that too, so.
So let's vote on this board chair then, so it's only me. So I accept, is there any?
Second. Well, just to make it fun, I want to nominate Jerry Turgerson then.
She said Derek was doing great. No one wants to do it. Okay, so, um, can we vote on me and let's move on? All in favor of me remaining as chair?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, great. And now, uh, the board vice chair, any nominations for that? I know that, um, Mike has said he would continue doing that.
I'll nominate Mike for vice chair.
Yeah, second.
Are there any other nominations? All right, we'll vote on that, all in favor of Mike as vice chair?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and the, uh, community, or sorry, the Citizens Advisory Committee Chair, we have a nomination for that, currently held by Commissioner Kilburg.
I don't want to, like, if she really wants to do it, but I would nominate Robin for that.
Second.
I will accept it, if it's okay with Peggy. Sorry, Peggy.
Sorry, Peggy.
All right, are there any other nominations? Okay, all in favor of Commissioner Wheatley, serving as the Citizens Advisory Committee Chair? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.